Welcome Vice Mayor and Council members. I am calling this special meeting of the Albany City Council for February fifth, two thousand and twenty-four to order. City Clerk, if we can have roll call.
Yes, Councilmember Hansa Romero will join us shortly. Councilmember Jordan is recused. And Councilmember Tiedemann.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Mickey.
Here.
And if I could just add to the recusal, Councilmember Jordan is not attending because his property that he owns with his wife is located within five hundred feet of the subject property for the closed session.
Thank you. And with that, we'll break to closed session.
Do you want to take public comment before we do that? In case there is any.
Oh.
Yes, let's take public comments.
Okay.
But there are none.
Thank you. I'm gonna add that to my notes.
Apologies for really including that in the notes.
I give you a second.
I have one second. That's all I have. No, no, you start at the six.
Yeah. Welcome Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. I call the regular meeting of the Albany City Council for February 5th, 2024 to order. If the Vice Mayor would read the land acknowledgement.
The City of Albany recognized that we occupied the land originally protected by the Confederate villages of Lejeune. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must take strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloni tribe. We thank them for their contributions which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commit to sustaining ongoing relationship with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home.
Thank you Vice Mayor. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hansa Ramara.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Tiedemann.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Here.
And Mayor Mickey.
Here. This brings us to item three, Report on Actions Taken During Closed Session.
Thank you Mayor. The council voted unanimously four zero, as I had mentioned earlier, Councilmember. Preston Jordan was absent for a conflict, but they voted unanimously four zero to initiate litigation regarding 1126 Brighton. And it is involving a code enforcement matter. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. That brings us to item five, City Manager's Report. City Manager, may the council have your report.
Thank you Mayor. We have a wonderful response to recent storms that were incredibly strong winds and rains over the weekend. I am pleased to report from our Public Works personnel that we have very minimal impacts and really just applaud their proactivity and efforts in ensuring that was the case and doing maintenance ahead of the storm cycle as usual. Appreciate everyone's patience as we did have some minor localized flooding as usual and some tree branches and whatnot. So really positive outcome to all of the what ifs in an unexpected significant storm of such. We have a meeting for Lower Cornice's Creek forthcoming on February 7th at 6:00 PM at UC Village across the way. Representatives from UC, City of Berkeley, and the City of Albany will be in attendance presenting information on the restoration of those creekways as well as related issues with creek usage. We have a paratransit workshop forthcoming on February 23rd at 1:00 PM at the Senior Center. This workshop provides information and allows participant feedback on the various services offered by the city and county paratransit programs. More information is available on our website about the program and the upcoming workshop. Also, at our Senior Center, AARP volunteers will be on site Thursdays from February 9th through April 11th to provide assistance to those in need of filling out basic tax returns. Appointments are required and space is limited, so please sign up by stopping by the Senior Center or calling the Senior Center to schedule an appointment. In February, we have a break from school for a week and our Recreation Department has organized a February camp. Signups are now underway. The program spans the whole week, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, so be sure to sign up soon if that is a needed service. An exciting pop-up is occurring at Memorial Park. A volleyball flex court will be available at one of the tennis courts at Memorial Park. It's a first come, first served basis. You can also make a reservation online. We'll have a lot more information in our e-news about it as well, but basically it's a court that you can roll out and it's portable net for volleyball if you are so inclined. Friends of all Albany seniors will be having a pancake breakfast. Thank you to our fire department for chefing this event as usual, should be fantastic. It will be held on this Saturday from 9:00 to noon at the Senior Center. And the primary election is around the corner, so please look for those ballots forthcoming as well as use of our Dropbox right here in the back parking lot lobby area. And there will also be a ballot drop stop on Tuesday, February 13th and Wednesday, February 14th from 10:00 to 4:00 at the Community Center for anyone who would like to turn in their vote by mail ballots in that fashion. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you City Manager. If anyone attending would like to ask questions about or comment on the City Manager's Report, please raise your hand now. If you're online, you can raise your hand as well, and if you have, calling in by phone, you can press star nine. Note, this is for questions and comments on the City Manager's Report only. If you have comments on matters not on the, not on the agenda at the time, for those is next. Seeing no comments from the public, any comments from councilmembers? Seeing no comments from councilmembers, we'll move on to Good of the City. Good of the City portion of the meeting is for attendees to provide council comments, information, and questions on items that are not on the agenda. Please raise your hands now, by phone, again, you can press star nine.
You can, if you're in the audience, go ahead and line up next to the podium.
City Clerk, how many people online do we have?
We don't have any hands right now.
Okay, so we'll go with three minutes each.
Actually, I have people who turn in the cards first, so Travis Johnson. Yes, go ahead.
I have, I have some concerns about additionists going up and near my house at 510 Carmel Avenue. And I have a letter I'd like to read expressing my concerns, and I have some copies of it with some photographs that I can distribute to councilmembers. Okay, to the Honorable Members of Albany City Council, I would like to express my concerns regarding construction that is underway at 510 San Carlos Avenue in the City of Albany. This structure raises a number of concerns. I understand that the state of California is mandated and is encouraging housing. I believe though that the City of Albany needs to give closer scrutiny to this, to such projects. My concerns are several. Fire safety. I've been a homeowner in the City of Albany since November 1983, that's 40 years. Shortly after we moved in, I inquired about replacing my existing detached garage. I was informed that to do so would require moving structures six feet away from the property due to concerns for fire safety. In looking at the structure that is going up at 510 San Carlos, it appears that this is no longer a concern. This structure appears to be right up against the property line. What is the city's response to this increased density and corresponding fire risk? Neighborhood aesthetics. I'm also concerned about how this structure changes the character of my neighborhood. Most of the houses around my property are McGregor houses with a distinct aesthetic and character. The structure going up at 510 San Carlos is simply a massive box, a box looming over the neighborhood. It appears that the property is left with little yard space, and I've included some photos that show how that structure appears from both my property and my neighbor's property. Properties impacting on the neighborhood. This project reduces the sunlight on my property. For example, in mid-winter, December 21, I lose about two hours of sunlight in the middle of my backyard. I've attached a screenshot of application I use for tracking the sun that shows that impact. This progress is also reducing privacy. Appears that two sides of the structure have floor-to-ceiling windows that look down onto my property. What is the city's response to such structures providing less sun and less privacy? What mitigation efforts can the city provide? In summary, I understand that the need for additional housing, but it seems to me that the city needs to pay closer attention to reviewing plans considering the impact of housing projects on the neighboring properties and offering solutions that help to mitigate impacts of fire safety, privacy, aesthetics, and related issues. Thank you for letting me share my concerns.
Thank you for your comments.
JJ?
Hi, JJ, I'm an Albany resident. I don't have anything prepared. I guess, first thing struck me that you all started off with a land acknowledgement speaking to a genocide and a displacement of peoples. I find that kind of sickly ironic that you're willing to acknowledge a historical genocide but are completely silent on the current one that's occurring, not just halfway across the world, but to people with very real ties to that part of the world. On Saturday, I was having dinner with a friend from Gaza who received a phone call from his sister informing him that their house had been burnt to the ground. I guess there's some kind of strange cost-saving measure because it's cheaper to set fire to the homes now than it is to use anti-tank mines to blow them up. So, I don't know if that strikes some historical memory for some people, but it should. I don't know what you all talk about to your friends and family and how you're going to reconcile this time and what you did or didn't say or do, and what little power you had. But I'm still waiting for some emails back. I don't know how many of you are answering your emails to your not very Merini constituents, but I think those of you who haven't at least responded should be ashamed of yourselves. It's pretty disgusting behavior to not even respond. You know, we're voters, we're not supposed to be shouting into a void. You're not that busy, any more than anybody else is. So I think you should at least do your jobs and engage with your community. Explain to the Palestinian members of your community why you don't think this is a local issue, why they sit around their dinner tables in this city and take calls from family members. Maybe you can explain to them how this isn't a local issue.
Thank you for your comment.
Sandra Reed.
I'm here to speak for a ceasefire in Gaza. I urge you to put your, on your agenda and support a resolution for a ceasefire in Gaza. Over 70 US cities have passed resolutions for a ceasefire. Among them are Chicago, Seattle, San Francisco, Oakland, Richmond, Long Beach, St. Louis, Atlanta, Minneapolis, Akron, and Albany, New York, my home state. Albany has passed political resolutions on national and international issues. Most recently in 2020 urged the federal government to extend TPSA to help migrants. 2021, support Afghan refugees. I don't know any Afghan refugees in Albany, maybe they are. 2022, condemn racism after the Buffalo shooting. 2022, support the exoneration of the Port Chicago 50. As federal Judge Jeffrey White said in federal court Friday, "Military and financial support to a foreign nation is a quintessential political issue." And we're, you're a political body. He stated that there is strong evidence that Israel's military siege in Gaza is intended to eradicate a whole people and therefore plausibly falls within the international prohibition against genocide, inferring that genocide is going on, most probably in Gaza. In the past four months, over 25,000 innocent Palestinians, 70% estimated to be women and children. Right, as of October, two mothers, not soldiers, are killed every hour. A war is supposed to be between soldiers. As a retired school psychologist, I'll give you an analogy. When two children are fighting on the playground, I did work in West Contra Costa, so I know, I know what's going on. We separate them for, for a cessation of the fighting, first to separate them. Then we bring them together for conflict resolution. So that both parties' needs are met, and so they have an understanding of how the other feels. We never allow them to fight it out and may the strongest prevail. Politics begin at home. When I was marching in San Francisco, a woman with a hajib said to me, "Thank you for doing this." And I said, "It is my moral responsibility, my moral obligation to do it. I don't need thanks." This is the only way we can lend our voice for peace. I urge you to vote, put on, put on your agenda and support a resolution for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Amber Yoda.
Hello, my name is Amber Yoda. I also didn't prepare comments, but I'm here to urge you all to put a ceasefire resolution on the agenda. So I am of Jewish ancestry and German ancestry on one side. I'm of English ancestry and Irish ancestry on the other side. These are, these are peoples who have been subjugated, right? Who have been oppressed. And I know from my own existence that it's possible for beautiful things to come after a conflict. But first, it has to be a conflict, but first, it has to be acknowledged. What I saw here at the last city council was really sickening. I heard people call Muslims jihadists. I heard like a lot of racist language. And I just want to like name that right now, the temperature in this country, it's rising to a fever pitch where the Islamophobia, similar to post-9/11, we're seeing it, we're hearing it, like people are experiencing it. It's being published in the New York Times, it's being published in the Wall Street Journal, and that really does make our Muslim neighbors unsafe. I do want to name that, like, going through school, I did not learn about any genocide except the one that was exacted on the Jewish people in World War II. Growing up, I've learned about the genocides that the United States has done against the Native Americans, against Black Americans, against, in the Philippines, in Hawaii, in Samoa, in so many places. And Jewish people don't have a monopoly on suffering. And I say that as someone who has lost people in the Holocaust. Palestine was not given to Jewish people as reparations. It was part of a colonial plan that started earlier than that. And I've heard like really disingenuous messaging from Zionists here, that, in this room, that, you know, "Why don't the Palestinian people just make their own government?" But they have tried. In 1929, 300 Palestinian women came from all over Palestine to Jerusalem to protest. Well, at first, they were asking the British governor there to stop the settlements because they had collective punishment against their uprisings, and they denied them, and so they took to the streets and they protested. And so, I just want to say that the resistance has been there for 100 years, and it's going to continue, and that it's longer than any of your political careers. And so, I hope that you keep a long view of that, and I hope that you remember that your children are watching, if you have children, and that my children are watching. And I want this to be a welcome place for any Palestinian refugees who end up here.
Thank you for your comments.
Go ahead.
My name is Haneeen. I'm a resident here in Albany, and I'm here to urge our council members to draft and pass a Gaza ceasefire resolution. For the past four months, we have been watching the people of Gaza document an unfolding genocide in real time. Over 27,000 Palestinians have been killed, including more than 10,000 children. More than 70% of Gaza's housing has been destroyed, leaving 1.8 million people displaced. Over 65,000 tons of explosives have been dropped on the Gaza Strip using our tax dollars. The people of Gaza are being forced to endure brutal collective punishment with nowhere to escape. It is time we take a stand to say we do not want our tax dollars to be used for killing innocent people. It is time we take a stand on the side of humanity and justice. Last month, South Africa took Israel to court on charges of genocide. Last week, a U.S. federal court in Oakland found that Israel is plausibly engaging in genocide in Gaza, and that the Biden administration needs to stop its unflagging support to Israel. So what are we waiting for? How many more people need to die for us to start taking action? A ceasefire means to stop the killing. It should not be controversial. It is the bare minimum. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay. Hi, I'm Zainab. I'm a resident of UC Village. So, what I'm trying to understand, and what a lot of, all of us here are trying to understand is the silence from all of you guys except for our vice mayor. What is it that you see that justifies this genocide deemed plausible by the International Court of Justice that is happening right now in Gaza? Yes, what happened on October 7th is horrific. No one here is denying that. But does that warrant the response Israel has taken, killing at least 30,000 Palestinian civilians, almost half of whom are children? I have Israeli friends, and I've been told that as unfortunate as it is, this is what needs to be done to protect Israel, to preserve the Jewish state. They blatantly told me that it's better that Palestinians get killed than Israelis. In other words, the life of an Israeli is worth more than the life of a Palestinian. I don't want to put their words in anyone else's mouth here, but I wonder, is that also what you believe? Do you agree that one human life is worth more than another? I certainly don't, and I would hope you don't either. All human lives are worth the same. No human, no matter what race, ethnicity, religion, gender, and the list goes on and on, is worth more than another. Like, we all agree on that, right? Like, I hope so. And so, that's what we're asking when we ask city council to support a ceasefire resolution. We're asking for an acknowledgement that all human lives are equal, that Palestinians, Palestinian children shouldn't be killed to ensure the protection of Israelis, that Palestinians should be allowed humanitarian aid, that the Israeli hostages be returned, that any anti-Semitic, anti-Palestinian, Islamophobic, and xenophobic attacks and rhetoric be condemned. We need this resolution, not just for the situation at hand, but also for our community here in Albany, which is so beautiful and diverse. Supporting a ceasefire resolution will tell our community that all life should be treated equal, whether here or abroad. So I ask you, we're asking you here, that at least that we have a conversation about this, like to set up a special meeting to reflect on this crisis. I just, we just want to understand what you're thinking. It's just been silence. Like, why are we hearing the silence? And if you are against a resolution, then we just want, we want to understand why. Why is that so? So we just want a conversation, we want to talk. I'm going to follow up on email with each and every one of you after this meeting, and hopefully, we can arrange something. Okay? All right. Well, thank you, guys, all.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Sherry Drobiter, and I'm not a resident of Albany. I'm a resident of El Cerrito, so I want to just put that forward to you right now. But, you know, in El Cerrito, we're also seeking a resolution, and we're getting a similar response. I know that you know the facts. Like, I'm sure you read the news, I'm sure you've seen the images of civilians who have been, you know, buried in rubble, of the lack of structures left in Gaza, just the brutality of it all. So, I'm not going to give you any of that information, but I've been thinking a lot about this, and I'm thinking a lot about why there is silence, like why are city council members refusing to hear even a discussion about a resolution in some cities and in other cities where they're passing it? In other cities where some council members have had to come to the public podium here because they couldn't speak at the diocese and claim their desire for a ceasefire. So, in thinking about this, and in thinking about silence, I think a lot about the fact that you're all politicians. I don't know your careers. As I said, I don't know Albany, but, you know, you run for a political office. It's supposed to be nonpartisan, but, you know, how many of you are part of the Democratic Party's structure? How many of you are being, you know, muzzled because so many people around the country, so many politicians, have not been speaking out, and they're not speaking out because they feel like they have to toe the party line? Now, that may not be your case, and if it isn't your case, I hope you have some other reason that you can think about for yourself, because certainly, it can't be because you lack compassion. Certainly, it can't be because you lack empathy, or that you, you know, lack the desire to see a better world. I mean, I'm going to assume that about all of you up here. I really am. I want to. But I also know that you're politicians, and I just have to say it because I've just been watching it for a long time, and I heard, you know, the eldermen of Chicago say, "How could you pass this resolution? You're going to undermine the Biden election." And none of us want to see Trump, obviously not, but we don't want to see a genocide. And the silence that prevails on all of you right now, if that's what's stopping you, like, please, you know, don't let it stop you, because when you look back on where you are right now, and you have to think about where your stand was and who you were politically and principally, I hope it, you know, I hope it's a better stance and win for justice. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, my name is Fred Bialy. I am a former resident of Albany, and as I wrote a couple weeks ago, I have another connection to the town. My father helped design the building we're sitting in. I feel like several of the speakers have already said what I was going to say. I'll say it again anyway. I appreciate the reference to the genocide on the native inhabitants of America. We're in a position where we can only apologize after the fact for that, but we're in a position now to have an impact on a genocide that is going on in Gaza. The International Justice Court has ruled that there's a plausible case that Israel is committing genocide in Gaza. The federal court, about a week ago, also ruled that it was a plausible case that Israel was committing genocide in Gaza. They declined to continue the case because they said it was a political matter. I feel like this is a moral matter. The U.S. government, the Biden administration, I feel is complicit in this genocide because of their unwavering support of Israel, sending weapons to Israel that are being used in bombing of Gaza. They are not responding and listening to the outcry in the United States from even Democrats. But I feel that because it's a moral issue, it's a local issue as well, and that we all need to speak out as best we can personally, and also in our positions of influence. And you all have influence, I feel like, as, just imagine if every city in this country came out with a ceasefire resolution. What kind of influence would that have on the U.S. government to stop the genocide? So I feel like we need to all do what we can in whatever position we have, either personally or as elected officials, to speak out against the genocide and try to get it stopped before the entire population of Gaza is wiped out. If it's not the bombing, it'll be the disease, infectious diseases, lack of food, lack of good water. It's just intolerable. And one final thing, this is personal in a different way. I have a friend whose grandson was killed during his service in the IDF in Gaza. Her heart is broken. And mine is too.
Thank you for your comments.
One more on virtual.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to, my name is Morgan, and I'm a resident of Albany. I just want to stand with the fellow people that just spoke and say that this council really needs to pass a ceasefire resolution. I teach kindergarten, that's five-year-olds, and they are able to talk about this ongoing genocide, and I do not believe there's any excuse that this body cannot at least talk about it or pass a ceasefire resolution, which you all know is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, this is Elaine. One of my daughters was in a class at Columbia. Her teacher, Hillary Clinton, said she brokered the ceasefire deal with Hamas and Israel in 2012. Hamas broke the ceasefire. Hillary Clinton's position is, "Don't trust them," Hamas, that is. They cannot be trusted with another ceasefire. So, all these lovely people speaking have the best of intentions. I can tell that they're very kind people, but they're very far removed from the situation, and we really should look to experts like Hillary Clinton, who have actually attempted to broker the deal, and look to those folks for insight and guidance. Thank you very much, City Council.
Thank you for your comments.
And that's all.
City manager, there was the initial comment on 510 Carmel Avenue. Is there any follow-up to fire risk, neighborhood aesthetics, or loss of daylight in terms of city's ability and state law?
Our community development director can speak to that question.
I'm curious, this may not be known, but is this an accessory dwelling unit?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
This is not an agendaized item, so I'm really reluctant to get into any details. We'll certainly reach out to the person that was here and try to answer those questions. Indeed, there was a reference to changes over time in the, due to state legislation, local planning standards have changed dramatically, and this is a case of a accessory dwelling unit being very prominent, admittedly having a prominent impact on nearby neighbors. I'm not sure how much further I should go in, given that this is a, go to the city item.
Okay. Thank you, Director. With that, we'll move on to Item 7, Consent Calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. By approval of the consent calendar, those staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the city council. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or a member of the audience requests removal of the items from the consent calendar. Do any council members wish to have items to discuss separately or pull?
Seven, just for a quick comment.
Any items from the members of the public? Item seven?
I just want to thank Public Works staff and the consultants by extension and the contractors. That was quite a project. It was amazing to me that it came in inside the contingency, given all the things that happened, so I really thank you for your persistence and good financial planning.
I'll move consent.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
And Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to Item 8, Presentations.
Good evening, City Council. My name is James Sorrelli. I'm an associate engineer at Public Works. I'm going to discuss the sidewalk program, specifically bring you guys an update and some milestones from this year. Just going to briefly go through the program history, then talk a bit more with the focus on the past two years, phases five through eight, and then give a general program update, talk a little bit about this holistic approach that we started under the program during Phase 7 and onwards, and then some pilot curb and gutter pass-through bullbouts related to those holistic approaches. and then some pilot curb and gutter pass-through bulbouts related to those holistic approaches. So back in 2016, residents passed Measure P1. That's what, the parcel tax that funds the sidewalk repair program. Then the following year, the Transportation Commission approved the first criteria for how we prioritize these repairs within the city. That started with using the priority sidewalk network that was established in the active transportation plan. So Phases 1 through 3 kind of focused on the ATP network when doing repairs. Then for Phase 4, they started to move away from just the ATP network, the commission-approved criteria that focused on severe issues regardless of location in the city. In parallel with the Phase 4 construction efforts, the city contracted for a citywide survey to get a better set of data for scoping these repair phases. So originally, the ATP network was surveyed by staff, but we're working with more of a complaint and service request-driven database. And after Phase 4, we got to kind of focus on a data-driven database where we have all this sidewalk data for scoping repairs. So we can do it much more comprehensively, much more data-focused. So that first started in Phase 5, and then Phase 6 through 8 was the completion of all the critical repairs that came from that sidewalk survey. So to focus on these critical repairs, that was Phase 5 through 8. Beneficial Designs was the contractor that we used back in 2021. They're kind of ADA specialists. You know, they don't walk around with just a tape measure to measure discontinuities. They have all this very niche equipment to get as accurate of results as possible. They give us a very comprehensive database and kind of honed two specific features for use when we were doing these repair programs. The no-best path of travel and the non-planar pedestrian access routes. So no-best path of travel is a feature where there's at least two issues at a single location. And then non-planar pedestrian access routes are upheaval, where there might not be as apparent of a tripping hazard, but because the sidewalk has been lifted and is sloped so egregiously, people with limited mobility or using mobility assistance devices like a wheelchair, it might actually end up being a complete obstacle for them to get through. So we, the critical repair was, you know, no-best path of travel features that had at least a 2-inch or greater discontinuity. And the critical no pedestrian, no, non-planar pedestrian access route feature was, you know, if, at that kind of peak of where it was lifted, was at least 2 inches offset, and it was more than 8.30, about 8% higher grade. Typically, 5% grade is the maximum for a sidewalk, but when you're talking about ramps, it's a little over 8%. So that was a kind of a cutoff for what was considered critical. So Phase 5, again, to reiterate, focused on the worst of the worst in that dataset, and that allowed us to give us some more time to QC the critical repair list, which ultimately, we decided to take a geographical approach to do it most efficiently, to hit all those critical repairs around the city. So unsurprisingly, as you probably all know, most of these repairs are a result of street trees. Through Phases 5 through 8 particularly, we're talking about 86% of the repairs were either directly or indirectly, sorry, were directly adjacent to a street tree. And some of those locations actually had more than one street tree. Despite the fact that we worked around over 200 street trees, like I said, there's a few that had multiple, we only actually removed five total at four locations. There was one location that required two removals, but otherwise, we've, we're talking about maybe 2%, 3% of the trees we've worked around had to come out. And just to clarify, the street tree is, you know, we're talking about trees between the sidewalk and the curb. So here's kind of a general methodology, a little bit of a flow chart for visualizing how we approach sidewalk repairs around street trees. Starting in planning design, we kind of just take a simple look, you know, can we curve the sidewalks? Can we ramp the sidewalks over the roots? And if we're unable to do that, we talk to the city forester, and we discuss, you know, can we do some tree pruning, some root work, without destabilizing the tree, without, you know, creating a potential safety hazard? If he believes that, you know, it will present a safety hazard or some kind of destabilization of the tree, we go forward with the tree removal process. That goes through Parks and Recreation and Open Space Commission. We have the authority to approve or deny these applications. So if, you know, we go on with construction. If, you know, curving and ramping doesn't work, we look at shaving and pruning the roots. Shaving is where we have a major root, and we can actually take just some of it off where we keep at least half of the root mass. That way, we can just, you know, get the full sidewalk level in. Pruning is when we do need to cut the roots. And, you know, it's important to note, even when we do plan and design, you can't actually see what the extent of the root is until we open up the sidewalk. There's actually been some situations where we think there's going to be a lot of roots, and it's actually just all soil that pushed up. And then there's some situations where we didn't expect any roots, and there's a lot of roots. So when we do see a lot of roots more than we think, we feel confident to shave or prune, we do involve the city forester. He comes in with his recommendation. And throughout all these repair phases, his general recommendation has been to, you know, do the root work, and we'll watch the health of the tree in the long term. There never has been an emergency removal during construction, although the sidewalk program does have the authority to do that. And each situation, each tree is unique. For example, camphers, you know, those are the very bulbous trees that you might see, especially on like the Washington, Portland, northeast side of town. It's actually often at the roots. It's just that they grow so large that they just buckle from the pure width of the diameter of the tree. And then there's some species, like our crape and swamp myrtles, that do really well with pruning. Then we have other species around here that, you know, pruning can be a bit dangerous, like our liquid ambers, they're prone to sudden limb drop. So every situation's unique for a lot of factors. Here's just, you know, some examples of what kind of curvature the sidewalk looks like when we're done. Here's some in Phase 5. Depending on the width, we can get some pretty large curves, like in the center picture. We do need to maintain a minimum four-foot width. We try to do five feet when we can, but generally, when we curve, it's a minimum of four feet. Here's some examples in Phase 6. I really do want to point out the one on the right. This was on Stanage, just south of Marin. This was one where kind of the stars aligned. You know, we had a homeowner that was on board with how we want to adjust things. We didn't, we had the right-of-way availability. There was no constraints at the back of sidewalk. We didn't have any driveway issues. We didn't have any walkway issues. And it's actually hard to tell from this picture, but the curb here is anywhere between 6 to 12 inches lower than the top of the sidewalk. We needed significant amount of planter strip to make sure that there was no tripping hazard when you were, you know, kind of walking towards the sidewalk, which is why we had to push it back so far. That's, it's rare that we're able to do such a, you know, great repair like that, but we do try our best to do that whenever we can. Here are some examples during Phase 7. I think a lot of you will recognize the image on the left. That's at, right across the street from the east side of Memorial Park, off of Portland. That was a pretty rough one, and we were able to adjust the back of sidewalk defense line to, you know, to avoid having to take those trees out. Here's some examples from Phase 8. This was actually a bit of a difficult phase. You know, the southeast part of the neighborhood, which is where Phase 8 was focused on, has a lot of four-foot wide sidewalks. So when we have to curve sidewalks here, a lot of them needed to curve the entire thing. We couldn't just, you know, kind of wedge in the face of sidewalk. We really need to shift everything. As you can see on the right, that's a, there was no getting around those trees very easily. So some, you know, here's a, talk a little bit about a general program update. So Phases 5 through 8, we did about 176 locations in the past two years. And overall, since the program started, the first repair phase started in 2018, we've gotten over, just over 400 repairs, 404. There are a few critical repairs to be addressed, but they are all going to be captured under separate projects at this point, a majority of them actually under Marin, the next phase of Marin paving. Tabulation of just some milestones achieved. We've, you know, we repaired over 60,000 square feet of concrete sidewalk. And we've utilized a little bit over $1.3 million worth of the P1 funds. I do want to be clear, this is not audited financials. These are based on project records and invoices. And in the future, you know, at a CIP discussion or, you know, a financial audit, you'll get the actual numbers. But this is a pretty good approximation of how much funding we used. And you might notice the first, the earlier phases seemed to be coming a lot cheaper, but that's actually because we, there was a mixing of funding for the first two phases. It wasn't purely P1 that a lot of the future phases used. So just, in the past two years, Phases 5 through 8, just a quick map of all the locations where around the city that we've done. And in comparison, here's, here's everything we've done under the program so far. So since 2018, we've done a pretty good amount of sidewalk in the city, but there's no shortage, as you may know. We're also happy to say that we have been able to put a few curb ramps in during these sidewalk repairs. For those who may not be aware, you know, if you're doing a certain amount of improvements in an area, the adjacent curb ramps do need to be brought up to code. So here's, here's two corners we did in the last phase. The one on the left is Solano and Ventura, and the one on the right is at Santa Fe and Key Route. We'll talk a little bit of our holistic approach that we came into starting with Phase 7. So as you all know, you know, street trees, they damage the sidewalk, but it doesn't stop there a lot, especially with our larger trees. We see curb damage, we see gutter damage, we even see asphalt and street damage. So we thought, you know, if we have a qualified contractor doing sidewalk repairs, and there's issues immediately adjacent to the tree that caused the sidewalk repairs, let's holistically look at this. Let's do this all at once, leveraging funding from the, from other buckets, not from the P1. It's generally just curb and gutter repairs we've done so far, but there are two locations where we've done more comprehensive repairs. And the reason I call it comprehensive is because, you know, we couldn't just point to a standard detail and have the contractor fix it. This required detailed plans and surveys to actually prepare for the construction. This was at 1501 Washington. This is the northeast corner of Curtis and Washington, at St. Albans, for those familiar, and 602 Santa Fe, which is actually on Thousand Oaks, just west of the Santa Fe intersection. So here's kind of, you know, the examples of more of just the general curb and gutter repairs we do. The left and center pictures, we, you know, we repaired the curb and gutter, and we did no more than 6-inch bulbouts, just to make sure we can get the curb back in. And the one on the right, similar, we had curb gutter damage, but we also had some driveway approach damage that's been since repaired. 1501 Washington, this is one where we repaired the sidewalk, the curb, the gutter, really large amount of asphalt because of the extent of damage from the liquid ambers there. We installed a bulbout. The bulbout kind of allows for the tree to grow into a planter strip rather than the street at this point. And it also allowed us to make sure that we had two separate directional curb ramps. So it was a bit of a win-win there. And we also had to do some storm drain work. Originally, at the apex of the corner was the storm drain, but because we bulked it out, it did require two storm drain inlets now, one on each side of the street. 602 Santa Fe, this is one of the rarest opportunities to install a true ramp when we were doing the sidewalk repairs, where we were able to physically ramp over the roots. This involved sidewalk repair, curb and gutter repair. We did do a small, about 6-inch bulbout here, maybe even up to 12-inch, I can't remember off the top of my head, a little bit of regrading of the street. But really, it was the homeowner's willingness to do this project that allowed it to be successful. You can kind of see this retaining curb. It's, it's pretty high. It might not look like much, but the curb itself is 6 inches, and then you're talking at least 12 inches on the back here. If I was probably standing behind it over here, maybe a quarter to one-third of me would be behind it. That's how much we had to ramp up. And just so you're understanding, 5% grade is kind of the maximum with the sidewalk. We can go a little bit higher when we do ramps, but then it requires a 5-by-5 level landing at the top. So we need a lot of space to get this done. So we need wide sidewalks, wide right-of-way. And this is kind of one of the only locations in the past two years, past four phases, that I actually saw that we could fit this in. This ultimately did allow us to save this camphor tree, because otherwise, it probably would have had it come out. So lastly, I'll talk a little bit about our pilot curb and gutter pass-through bulbouts. So this is a similar, you know, holistic approach where we want to fix more than just the sidewalk. The street trees damaged the street, it's damaged the curb, it's damaged the gutter. But unlike, you know, some of the curb and gutter repairs I showed you earlier, a little 6-inch bulb isn't going to work with the extent of tree damage here. We're going to need to do something wider, deeper into the street. Otherwise, we'd have to remove the tree. But the problem is, these occur on locations where the streets are pretty flat. So if we were to bulb, like a traditional bulbout, it would probably cause water to pond and potentially even flood over the curb. And if it goes over the curb, well, we don't want it entering property. So a traditional bulbout wouldn't work. So what we've done is kind of installed these pilots where it channelizes flow around the tree. It creates more of a permeable space in front of the tree. It does remove the ability to park next to it, but that's required, that's what's needed to get this thing to fit. And it does ultimately allow for space for roots to grow into that bulbout rather than kind of into the tree. So here's kind of an example of what kind of tree would trigger this. This is 405 Keane's Avenue. This is right before you get to El Cerrito Plaza. Pretty large camphor tree. It's done pretty extensive street tree damage, sorry, street damage. And the picture on the right, that's actually a day after it rained. So you're already seeing, you're seeing water a day after it rained practically at the top of the curb. And you can even see from the darker concrete that probably not too long ago, it was over the sidewalk. And this is kind of how it looks today during a storm. We're seeing the flow go north, which is where the storm drain inlet is, pretty effectively. Water staying within the gutter, too. So bear with me, bear with me on this one. The picture on the left is a day after the storm. You're already, you know, we're seeing water past the shoulder. The pictures, the two pictures in the center are during a storm event. We're seeing a lot of water, but it's going in the direction it should be going. The gutters are full, but again, this is during an active storm. And then the picture on the right is just a couple hours after a recent storm. Surprisingly, the bulbout's dry, which means it really, it took that flow straight to the inlet like it's supposed to. There is a little bit in the gutter, but nothing that would create any kind of hazards. It just looks like there's a low point there. So again, that photo on the left is a day after the storm, and this photo on the right is just a couple hours. It's a night-and-day difference with these bulbouts. 805 San Carlos is where we installed the other pilot. These are two separate storms, both a day after the storm. You can really see on that picture on the right, you know, water is still above, almost at the curb. I actually was not paying attention, stepped in it, and it got me my whole foot completely wet. It was, it was a little deeper than it looks. This is more or less how it looks today. And similarly, here's, you know, on the left is a day after the storm. On the center is during a storm, and on the right's a couple hours after the storm. So so far, these look like they're doing what we had wanted them to do, what they intended to do. We're going to continue to evaluate them and see if they're performing throughout the winter. There's operations and maintenance we want to kind of take into account. You know, how much do we need to rake this to make sure the channel stays in place? How much debris builds up? Or, et cetera, et cetera. So far, so far, so good. And with that, I will open it to questions.
Let's remember Hanson Romero.
Hi, thank you for your presentation. I do have a couple of questions citing some specific areas that I noted, and it was, you know, a few years in the past, too. But there was one particular incident, like on the 1000 block of Key Route, where the bulbout was created to save the tree. And then ultimately, the tree was unable to be saved after the bulbout was created. And so now the tree is gone, but the bulbout is still there and creates that lack of parking issue on that particular street. Is there anything that can be done, like say, for example, once that's done, tree doesn't, if the tree doesn't ultimately end up surviving, can we come back through and recreate that, you know, parking space feature and even things out after that? So that's one question. And then there is another area that I've noticed just recently that I thought maybe we had hit already as far as the sidewalk repair, but I have not seen that happen. we had hit already as far as the sidewalk repair, but I have not seen that happen. And that's on Solano and Canes. There's a missing square of concrete near the Albany Twin Theater side door. That, that's a big hole right there, and that's a tripping hazard, and I haven't seen that taken care of or addressed yet. Thank you.
So I'm not sure, this is the first time I'm hearing about the Key Route one, but, you know, generally, it's, can easily be addressed probably best during a paving project. It kind of depends, you know, planning, it does create an opportunity to have a new tree planted there that grows into that space. That particular part of town has incredibly narrow planter strips, if I'm aware. So really, planting any tree in there is going to cause future damage. And planting a tree there actually may be beneficial because it can reduce the potential. But it is definitely possible in the future to, you know, remove the bulb out and strain out the curb. That would probably best be captured in our CIP process. And Solano and Canes, the sidewalk program does focus, there's, there's no shortage of deficiencies in the sidewalk, even after we've hit this critical repair list, and, you know, we're not stopping, we're going to keep going. If it does not have, if it wasn't captured in those features I discussed earlier, it's probably why it wasn't repaired. We can take a look at it, of course, and see if, you know, maybe it's changed since, but we're still going forward with these repairs and, you know, it might be captured in the future there.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think along those lines, if I recall correctly, you shared some data with me regarding how many spots there are left, not of these sort of dual problem spots, but sort of single problem spots, and they might have just a two inch offset, but not another problem as well. Which I think would be useful in around numbers if you have them to, I don't know if you do or not. I know you handed me a memo and I wish I brought it, but I think it would be useful for the council to...
Off the top of my head, I don't, don't recall. I remember...
Yeah, it was like hundreds.
Yeah. There's quite a lot of work left. There's quite a lot of work left.
Yeah, yeah. So that was eye-opening to me, because I was like, wow, you're done, you did it!
No.
No. All right, thanks.
We can get, we can resurrect that, recirculate it if it helps.
Yeah, I think it would be useful to send to the council, since you kindly provided it to me, so we all have the level set information.
Yeah, I just want to echo thanks to staff for all the hard work you've been doing. I'm really excited about these pass-through opportunities with the larger bulb out. I'm really excited about the possibility, as we move forward, of, as we work through the ATP, if there's opportunities where maybe it's not necessarily even a sidewalk issue, but it's more of a traffic calming issue, that we can kind of combine these programs and think about it as something that both benefits our trees, our sidewalks, and our, our traffic calming in the city. So, thank you. Any comments from the public? No comments from the public, no, any comments from, okay. So with that, we'll move on to...
Actually, I have a comment.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just didn't want to do it during the question period. I just want to thank staff again, saying it again, this is sort of infrastructure night here. So thank you so much, and thank you for the care that you've taken uniquely in each spot. I know it's, it's a lot of work. I think it has additional benefits for the city and making it sort of a more interesting place to walk around as well. And I know, I think in one of the earlier phases, I had a lot of questions where I thought, eh, this doesn't look quite right to me in the plans, and I was wrong every time. And I like being wrong every time, I'm most happy when I'm wrong every time. So, because that means I can just step back and, and let it happen. So thank you very much for doing all this detailed work. And as a hydrogeologist, those flow-through swales are just bringing a tear to my eye, I just love seeing those. And, and the fact that you got the grain size correct, so they didn't blow out, you know, I was kind of wondering if all the gravel was going to end up, you know, down in the creek or down in the storm drain, but it didn't move, so really amazing. So thank you again for all the work.
Thank you. So we'll move on, thank you, staff. We'll move on to 10 unfinished business. 10-1 is the citywide street light evaluation.
So, yes, I'm still up here. If anybody has logged in online to watch, again, my name's James Sorrelli, I'm an associate engineer at Public Works Department. So as council may know, we've been working hard on the citywide street lighting evaluation. We've surveyed the, our entire street lighting network, we've done public engagement through workshops and online surveys, and we've done, all of this has been through Clayton and Associates, a partnership with them, they've been great to work with. And I'm going to pass it over to Dane Sanders, president of Clayton and Associates, to kind of talk about the process that has gotten us to today, where we've really are finalizing that street lighting evaluation.
Great, thank you, James. I'm Dane Sanders, the president of Clayton and Associates. We are lighting designers and electrical engineers. And let's see, I'll share my screen here to give the presentation up. Okay, so are you seeing the screen now? Yes, I think so. Our team came out and evaluated the street lighting throughout Albany and really with the intent to bring your street lighting system up to current standards and to kind of hear what the, what the issues are with the public. I know that you had changed out your lighting to LED about 15 years ago and have been experiencing failures of those lights as they reach their, their end of life. So a lot of the darker areas that people are experiencing is related to the degradation of the LEDs over time. We've gone through an engagement process, surveyed and gathered data on all of your street lighting, and you now have a full street lighting inventory that was part of this project in GIS format. We've gone and actually measured lighting conditions and photographed those as well, then developed the guidelines, basically what are the, how should lighting, street lighting apply to lighting throughout the city for future projects and also for renovations or retrofits? With that, we've been looking at the prioritization of some of these areas and how the city can create a kind of a toolkit for the city to further discuss these evaluations and the recommendations. And we're, here we are presenting those final recommendations to you today. Street lighting has a number of different things to consider as we're looking at, obviously visibility being one of the main concerns, how lighting affects safety and security, to health and well-being, that we've learned a lot about how light affects, especially light at night, affects human health and, and health of the environment. To design aesthetics and how that can create a unique character for the city, as well as cost, maintenance and energy, to really being responsible with the use of light at night, controlling light pollution, light trespass, considering impacts on wildlife and the environment. So we held a public workshop and a street lighting demonstration. Through that, we went through a number of different questions and activities, kind of getting feedback from citizens throughout the city, and found that one of the major concerns and issues was improving lighting for pedestrians for visibility and safety and for cyclists, making sure that we're using the right color of light. And then, you know, the kind of balanced concern about both overlighting and underlighting throughout the city of Albany, making sure we're supporting dark skies and, you know, also creating safe places for people to use the streets at night. We went through a lighting 101 presentation and gave some background on what the lighting terminology is and metrics. And then took people out to take surveys in different locations at intersections and residential mid-block settings, as well as some of the commercial areas along Solano and also along Masonic Avenue. The intent of this was to understand the, the impact of color temperature and light levels. So we had multiple different color temperatures, and at some of these locations, we dimmed the lights down at different light levels to understand the visibility as light is dimmed. As it turns out, like visibility with lighting and the lighting metrics are not linear. So when we say something like, you know, 50% of light level does not necessarily mean 50% of brightness perception. Our guidelines have created standards to control the sort of obtrusive light, effects of light at night, making sure we're keeping light on the sidewalks and on the streets and not into people's homes, and that we're not putting light directly up into the sky. In our initial site visits, we found some of the streetlights were really providing quite a bit of light trespass. You can see the, how much light is falling on the facades of these homes. But in our demonstration, we included some shielding, house side shielding and this perimeter, full perimeter shield that controlled and kept the light from hitting the residents across the streets and on both sides of the street, really, keeping that light to the street and sidewalk. And the shield, the shielding was quite effective. This particular example here is actually in Denver, Colorado. This is the 16th Street Mall in Denver that kind of demonstrates a few things with, related to color temperature and with light level, and also with another metric called color rendering. So these lights were originally, these are high-pressure sodium, kind of a legacy technology that before metal halide, had a low color temperature, low color temperature and low color rendering, but had a pretty high light level. And the 3.4 foot candles was, is quite a bit of light at night. We could, by swapping these out to LEDs with a little bit higher color temperature and a higher color rendering index, we were actually able to use a third of the light to create a space that feels much brighter than originally, using less energy, and also creating an environment that really improves visibility and kind of comfort in the space with this, being able to see the colors in the space with the flowers and the plants and the trees. And it really, as we go back and forth here, it's pretty dramatic how, if you look at these planters, what the color perception is between these two light sources. With color temperature, then we know that with light and health, that the more blue content of light has more impact on wildlife and on human health. So we, we want to maintain a lower color temperature within the warm white range. And our recommendation for this particular project and this, this street lighting here is to go with a 2700 Kelvin, which is very similar to incandescent lighting that you would have experienced before LED came out. The 2700 Kelvin is also slated to possibly be the state of California's maximum color temperature. Currently, is the maximum color temperature allowed is 3,000 for state-funded projects, but that is very likely to become 2700 Kelvin soon. So you would remain kind of with, relevant with current state of California standards. This is the lighting, the street lighting inventory that is in GIS now, and the city will be able to update and maintain as, as things change throughout the city with some of the upcoming projects and updates that would come, that would follow this, this study that we provided here. We've provided, we've looked at all of the, like, priority sidewalks, knowing that improving lighting for pedestrians and cyclists was kind of top of the list. Wanted to utilize these maps to understand where the best use of funding would go for priority sidewalks and for the bikeways. And we've also looked at collision data and been able to filter the data for nighttime related incidents and those areas that, where lighting was more likely part of the collision issues. And really then focusing on those that are related with pedestrians and, and cyclists to create a priority of improving safety at some of those intersections. We went and measured and photographed 10 different sites throughout the city. Each of these locations had already been upgraded to a new LED, so they were fully functional and not experiencing the kind of failure that you're, that most of the areas experiencing now. But we're able to find areas, some, some areas that were fairly dark, especially Upper Marin, had some, a lot of shadowing and darker areas, to some areas that were excessively lit along Buchanan and some parts of Solano, to other areas that were marginal, and a lot of them were, were fairly well-lit with, when the proper luminaire is, is installed. You have different styles of street lighting throughout your city, sampling of what we call Cobra Heads, the sort of utilitarian street light that we typically see. But you also have decorative pedestrian scale lights, the globe lights along Solano and post hops on Masonic, as well as, I would say, under deck lighting along the Aloney Greenway and the, under the BART tracks. Our street lighting guidelines, this is sort of a process here that goes through that our guidelines lay out, so that there will be consistency amongst new street lighting projects and renovation projects that occur in the future. Starting with street lighting warrants, whether lighting is kind of required or not, according to, you know, Federal Highway Association warrants, that really, a lot of speed limits is a big portion of that, that, you know, streets and a lot of local streets with like 25 mile an hour or under 30 miles an hour, your headlights provide a safe, safe stopping distance and detection of people. But, you know, not lighting some of your residential streets for pedestrians using that area at night, there's been a lot of, I guess, citizens who would like to have street lighting to be able to illuminate the sidewalk so that they can walk with a little bit more confidence at night. So, once we look at the lighting criteria, we've utilized street classification, adjacent land use and pedestrian activity to tune in the right criteria, that is not going to be overlighting the area, kind of providing the right level of light for the use of that particular area. Then looking at lighting strategies, whether, looking at the scale of light, whether using the, like, 30-foot tall streetlights to 12-foot pedestrian scale lights, and what that lighting layout is, and finally, the luminaire selection, so that it can, this guide can be utilized to order the right luminaire for the, the right situation. And at different applications, looking at intersections, crosswalks, streets, priority sidewalks and bikeways. Utilizing some of the GIS data that we have, we were able to study our... Utilizing some of the GIS data that we have, we were able to study our, what spacing of the existing streetlight poles with the right luminaires would meet the criteria that we've set out. So this analysis basically says, where is that spacing of the existing streetlight infrastructure within expectation, closer than required by criteria or further apart? So once we, we lay, overlaid this map along with the priority sidewalks and the bikeways to help determine some of the strategies for prioritizing where we would recommend lighting improvements. So this map now goes through the priorities, starting with the critical safety at intersections where the collision data is showing issues are occurring. So we want to improve, make sure that those are improved first and prioritized. Then looking at intersections near schools that are currently underlit to intersections along these bikeways and priority sidewalks. Now looking at areas sort of mid-block between intersections where we again have lighting, additional lighting near schools to additional lighting along the bikeways and priority sidewalks. In some cases, like along Buchanan, we found that the infrastructure is pretty good right now. You can pretty, pretty much do one-for-one replacements of those lights, but there was a lot of light spill, a lot of light trespass and the, just having some, adding some shielding to control that light trespass will go a long way. Along up Solano, there's also some changes in luminaires that may be required to be able to improve the lighting in those areas. Then looking at more comprehensive streetscape designs that will require a lot more infrastructure, underground, electrical and other larger projects really. Solano, along Solano would be a comprehensive streetscape design. And Buchanan going underneath the interstates, there's a trail and other areas that are pretty dark right now would require some more comprehensive design. So we've taken these priorities and improvements and plotted those with a level of priority and a level of complexity. So we can see that high priority and low complexity replacing current failed lights will be an easier thing to achieve quickly. While some things that are, you know, improving the intersections, we know that the, the safety, critical safety improvements in intersections is highest priority, but that will require some additional electrical infrastructure to be able to accomplish that. Sort of highest priority and most complexity level would be to improve intersection lighting along Upper Marin Avenue. And this is basically, this is giving a framework and a toolkit for the city to continue to find funding for these different improvements and how to prioritize those and plan for them coming in the, in the future. That's the end of the presentation now, so open that up for questions.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the work. Again, super exciting. I came into office in 2020, somewhat focused on this, so it's really rewarding to, to see it get this far and thank you staff. The, you mentioned one of the tasks was evaluating lighting. Was that done at those 10 locations or at more than those 10, I think it was 10 locations?
We, we went and took field measurements at 10 locations, but we utilized the GIS database along with our recommendations to be able to provide this map where it's basically evaluating that citywide.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then I don't, I apologize, I don't recall, is there, I think there was cost, some sort of cost estimating information?
We have provided cost estimating information in our report.
Yeah. Okay.
I've seen no other questions from council. Are there questions?
Actually, I have another, I'll answer. So I, the, the highest impact on the, sort of look like a risk matrix was replacing the existing luminaires that are failing.
Right.
And so I, I asked staff about that, if that's getting underway. And I think there's some good news there, so I just wanted to ask it publicly so the other council members would know that good news as well.
Sure. Yeah, so that, let me take a step back, it might answer a broad range of questions here, but characterizing this as a toolbox is the perfect, perfect analogy, I guess. And an example of this would be the replacing of the failed and failing lights. We have the information here to work with Alameda County as well as the suppliers to identify luminaires that we can start replacing now, once we get them in play, in, once we order them and they, they come in. On the other side, we see the Marin, Upper Marin Avenue, this gives us the information and Allison is actually working with Clanton to see how we can integrate some of this into the Marin Phase Two. So, you know, the, this gives us stuff that we can be actionable very quickly and my hope is that you can see, you'll see some of this in the upcoming CIP.
Is replacing the, the luminaires that are failing in the current fixtures, is that, how's, how's that funded?
We're going to do that on our operating, so we have some amount in operating. We do have a backlog of things that are, so we will, there's a couple, this is the budget Tetris that I talk about sometimes where we're, we're figuring out how much we can afford with our current budget authorization, how much can Alameda County produce in a given month because they have limited resources. So we're trying to get our arms around that to see where we land.
I guess, as I've mentioned before, and I think I already know the answer, but I'll ask again in any case, having reached this point, if a dedicated funding stream kind of along the lines of the sidewalk, repair funding stream, that would help or make a difference or not needed?
I'm never going to say no to. I think, I think that question might come up down the line when we get our arms around what the total cost is and how to deal, and how to best deal, deal with this. My sense is we would probably want to do some sort of larger one-to-one replacement and just work through the city and I'm not quite sure how that would work.
Yeah, okay. I just, we're here in February, so I was like, could we roll this in to another measure that might be coming up? I know the answer previously was no, but I can't help but ask again because campaigning is a lot of work and.
At, at this point, I just don't think we have complete information to make a clear recommendation that we can stand by and be able to execute on.
Okay, thank you.
No, there was no public comment, correct? Any, back to council for any comments?
I did notice that a, there was a map that Avary, if I'm pronouncing it correctly, produced that was fixtures that are blocked to some degree by street trees. And I did notice one that wasn't on there and I shared photos with staff. So I'm, I'm certainly happy to move approval of this when we get there, but I do recognize it's 85% completion, so I would encourage Avary to take that one example and maybe run through their analysis again with a finer comb, using that as a, as a ground truth to see if there's other spots that might have been missed, which is not to say I want the tree removed or anything there, just first, first stop is having data, so. And the only other thing I'll mention is, is I think in terms of the organization of the reports, one change that I'd be interested in is moving the, replacing failing LEDs to the top of the improvement category on page 16. So, you know, it's kind of one of these details, but because it seemed to be, have the greatest cost benefit and I think it's down towards the bottom of the list now, you know, just optically, since the city is working on it and it's doing it now, I think it's both for the reason of this risk matrix and because the city is already doing it, I think it's like own the win and put it up front and say, we're doing the top priority thing. And in that regard, there's also a page for replacing the LEDs. Can't remember what page it is, but it's again further, further back and to move that one up to the front of the project pages. So I'll include that in a motion if I'm the one to make the motion. Should I make a motion? Okay. All right. Yeah, so I, I move approval of resolution 2024-11 with the changes of moving the LED replacement project to the top of page 16 and move page 21, which regards that project to page 17, so it would come right after page 16. So it would sort of highlight that, I agree with that project, pretty straightforward.
I will second that motion and say my thanks to staff for all the work that went into this.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
And councilmember Hansa Romero?
Yes.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you all.
Moving on to item 10-2, heat pump rebate program.
Good evening, councilmembers. Michelle Plaus, community development analyst, here again to talk to you about heat pumps. Today I'll be chatting about a recommendation to provide additional funding and a few minor changes to the amounts for our heat pump rebate program. Next slide, please, Ann. So I'll start off just with a little bit of background about the program since it's been a while since I was up here talking about it. So this is a rebate program run by the city that's designed to incentivize the installation of heat pump HVAC systems. These are electric HVACs that use our 100% clean electricity we have here in Albany to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. And as it says here, it's part of our climate action and adaptation plan electrification goals. So this program started back in March of 2022. It was created by the council with a $40,000 budget initially, after being recommended by the Climate Action Committee. It launched in June of 2022 and then in February of last year, we came back here and the council provided an additional $65,000 in funds for the program and also increased several of the rebate amounts and created a three-tiered system with different amounts for moderate and low-income households. So this is just an overview of what those amounts look like. They're different amounts, as I said, for moderate and low-income households as well as for ducted versus ductless heat pumps, which have a different price range for them. And then there's also a bonus rebate available if you have an electric panel upgrade going along with a heat pump installation. Our eligibility for the program is pretty broad. All buildings in Albany are eligible, although there is a limit of one rebate per housing unit. Any contractor can be used, there's, there's no specific list, as long as, you know, it gets, gets approved by the city, gets a permit and, and all those good things. And also the homeowner must apply for the rebate within four months of receiving their building permit. So just a few requirements there, sorry, could you go back? We also do have a $750 signing bonus for contractors who sign up with Bayren or the Tech Program. Those are two state-run rebate programs. And then I'll also just note that we found out in the spring of last year that all of these rebates are actually considered taxable income by the IRS. Well, technically any rebate that's over $600. So technically there is a $500 rebate available, so that one wouldn't be considered taxable, but anything over 600 is. So we found that out a little bit later, the finance department notified us, and so we've now worked that into our rebate system, that it's one of the documents that participants have to give us as a W9. And so unfortunately, not all of the rebate money gets to stay in the hands of the participants, but we have sorted that out now as part of our program. Thanks, Ann. Okay, so in terms of the, the process or the progress of the program, so over the course of its lifetime, we've now reserved or paid 65 rebates. Two of those were for low-income households and four for moderate-income households since the creation of our new income system last February. And right now we have nearly $16,000 remaining in the budgeted funds for the program. As you can see there, the majority of it has been paid and there's still a little bit that's in our reserved pile for projects that are ongoing right now. The average rebate amount was just about $1,400, although they did range all the way from 500 to 5,000, which are the two extremes based on the amounts that we have available. Next slide, please. And then in terms of program impact, it is somewhat tricky to determine this without, you know, some, some obvious counterexamples of a world without the rebate program. And of course, there's lots of factors, but generally we do think that it has been effective and impactful. As you can see in the chart on the right here, this is the number of heat pumps as a percentage of our total HVAC permits in the city. You can see there's a very large jump where basically they went from being very rare to relatively common over the course of 2021. And then since the start of the rebate program that we have, there's basically been a much, much less intense but steady growth, going from around 50% to around 60% of our permits. And then if you look on the right, you can see just the kind of raw numbers. Again, there's been kind of steady increases in the number of heat pumps being permitted in the city and decreases in the number of gas furnaces being permitted. So all of those are good indicators that, you know, heat pumps are becoming more and more popular, more and more common. And we do think that the rebate program is helping. Obviously, it's not a huge amount of money in the scale of things, so we don't expect that it's necessarily completely changing the calculus for everybody, but we do think that it's having an impact and kind of pushing people over the fence. And that's what we see in the next chart, if you could move to the next slide, Ann. So we have a question in the, in the rebate application form, just asking people, would you have installed a heat pump without the program? And you'll see that the most common answer is probably with several definitelys and a good number of maybes as well. And this is sort of what we would expect based on the amounts that, you know, it's again, not completely changing people going, oh my God, this is the best deal ever, I need a heat pump. But there's a good number of people who are sort of on the fence about it, not quite sure, and this is helping push them over the edge to getting that heat pump. So for those reasons, we think it has been effective. Sorry, go ahead, Ann. And so as we were, you know, thinking about the, the way to move forward with this program as we're starting to run low on funds, you know, we wanted to increase the total amount but also shift a little bit about the amount specifically for the moderate and low-income households. Because what we found is that for those higher-income households, it's been helping people go over the edge, but the number of moderate and low-income households that have been utilizing the program has been very small. As I said, just four moderate income and two low-income since last February. And part of the reason we think for that is because for those households with lower incomes, the incremental cost for a heat pump really feels much more intense, especially because it's the incremental cost for a heat pump really feels much more intense, especially because it's already an expensive project to start with. So as you can see here, the average cost for a ductive HVAC system for a furnace is about $8,000, which is fairly expensive. And a heat pump is $17,000, so actually more than twice as much with an incremental cost of 9,000. There are other incentive programs that help out with this. So there's the Tech Program that's currently offering a $1,000 rebate. There is the Bayren Program, which is $400. However, that's only for ductless systems or ducted systems with existing AC. So most Albany homes aren't eligible for that. And then finally, there's a federal tax credit for $2,000. So basically, $3,000 in other rebates available. And then finally, there is the HIRA Program. This is a federal program created by the Inflation Reduction Act that is going to be offering up to $8,000 in incentives, pretty much across the board. That is expected to launch sometime this summer in California, although it's still TBD. So I'll talk about that in a moment when we get to the next slide, but that's kind of in the specter when it comes to rebates as well. Next slide, Ann. So that's all preface to the recommendation here. The first recommendation is to appropriate an additional $75,000 for the program. And that number was selected because we think that it will last into the summer or fall of this year. And that will sort of coordinate with the launch of the Heber Program, at which point we can take a look at it again and decide if it makes sense to continue with the program, if it makes sense to sunset it or to change it. But we know that there's going to be a real shift in the landscape of, you know, heat pump incentives at that point in time. So the amount's estimated to, to last until about that period. And then there's also the changes or the increases in the amount for the ducted heat pump rebate for the low and moderate-income households. We recommend moving the moderate-income rebate from $2,000 to 3,000, and then the low-income rebate, to double it actually, from 3,000 to 6,000. And the reason for that number is that in conjunction with the Tech rebate and the federal tax credits, that would create a price parity for low-income households between the furnace and the heat pump system. So that's the reasoning behind all of those numbers there. Hopefully, that, that's clear. And then the last slide here, if you could move along, Ann, I'll just talk a little bit about the financial side of this, and hopefully I'll get it all right. But so for that $75,000 that we're recommending for the program, we wouldn't actually need an additional appropriation. That would be coming from approved Community Development Department budget. But it would also be tracked in the list of climate-related projects using Measure DD revenue, because of course that is going to the General Fund, which is funding the Climate, the Community Development Department. So it wouldn't require additional appropriation. It would just be approving the use of COMDEV funds for this program. And then to summarize the use of Measure DD revenue up to date, you'll see the chart on the right here has the list of expensives that are tracked to that, the climate-related projects that council is endeavoring to spend one-third of Measure DD revenue on. So you'll see we have the street planting, the street tree planting, EV charging pilot, and then two rounds of funding so far for the heat pump rebate program totaling $185,000. Over the course of the last two fiscal years, Measure DD has total, the revenue has totaled about 1.2 million. And so the one-third that council is endeavoring to spend on climate comes to 440,000. If the $75,000 recommended tonight is approved, then that total for Measure DD climate spending would go up to, I believe, 260,000. If someone can check my math, but I believe that's right. So yes, that's the financial impact, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thanks so much. On the financial, so twenty-two, twenty-three, well, so there's a Climate Reserve Fund that was created, but I think it only has the first little bit of a year, which was 2021, which, you know, it only kicked in a little bit, that the council's allocated to it. And then twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three hasn't been allocated yet. So the 75,000, I think I understand what you're saying, that the Climate Reserve Fund probably is like zeroed out or close to zeroed out officially what's in there, because we haven't allocated the one-third from last fiscal year yet to that, because that's coming up, I think, in April or something like that.
Yeah, I, I actually don't know exactly the details of the, of the Climate Reserve Fund itself.
Yeah.
I think that's coming for another presentation to council sometime soon. But yeah, I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's the same as this chart we see here.
Right.
This is just kind of tracking the things that council has kind of pegged as Measure DD climate projects.
Right.
But yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have all the details on the reserve fund.
We can provide those details, absolutely. And it, because of other reasons that we're currently finishing out our audit, I do have in 2023, resolution 2023 dash 27, the reserve fund allocation for the Climate Adaptation and Fund was 143,469. So there is an existing balance in that reserve fund. Based on the outcome of our audit this year, which we expect the council to receive in March, should we have remaining funds, surplus funds, some may call them, we would then follow that same advised formula to repopulate those reserve funds, including the 25% reserve to the General Fund first.
Yes, I'm asking after this, because just for accounting purposes, I, I would be in support of the 75,000 at some point, being, you know, we, we may do an allocation of the Climate Reserve Fund, and if we do, the 75,000 being charged against that eventually, just for tracking purposes, rather than coming out of some sort of, or general. I know it's, I know it's all general funds, I know, but, but for tracking purposes, in terms of communicating with the public, it's clear if it, you know, the one-third went in and the money came out, and here's what it went to. So I know we might not be able to do that now. I'm not sure if there's enough money in the Climate Reserve Fund right now. I'm not quite understanding that. If there is, and I would say I'd be in favor of allocating it from the Climate Reserve Fund. If there's not, which I think there probably is not, then maybe we do a swap down the line or something like that.
Sure, and I hear, I hear the interest, and I think there's ways we can accommodate that. I would absolutely want to weigh all of the opportunities through the Finance Director to make sure that we're addressing all of the commitments through that funding source.
Great. Something I didn't notice before was it just adding up on the, the the bar stack bar chart of HVAC, total HVAC, or yeah, total HVAC replacements, and then the number that were heat pumps. If I added those up from like 2022 until now, it looked like it was 120 or something that were heat pump HVAC. I don't know if you could go back to that particular chart. And I guess what, what occurred to me was if what I'm seeing is correct, which it may not be, but if it is, that means that not everybody who's going for a heat pump is actually going for the rebate, which is interesting.
Yes, that's definitely true.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the number you're stating somewhere in the 100 range is about right. And yeah, not all of the heat pump installations are getting a rebate. I'm not sure how many of those don't know about the program, although we advertise it a lot, or just aren't interested for whatever reason or anything, but.
Interesting. All right. Thanks.
Any other question?
I did have one question was just, so you mentioned, I loved seeing that there was an uptick in the low and the moderate income who applied. Do we have any sense of lower moderate income who applied for a permit just for a furnace replacement?
No, unfortunately, we don't have any kind of tracking on the income levels, yeah.
I was just trying to figure out how many, what portion of the low to moderate income were we able to capture?
Yeah.
That's it for questions. Any questions from members of the public? The additional comments from staff members?
I just wanted to voice my thanks to staff for putting this together. I know that when we last discussed this at council, we had a very high level and I think very rewarding discussion about what we wanted this program to be in balancing our goals around climate as well as serving lower-income households. And so I think what we have had brought back to us here really responds to that in a great way by increasing the amounts that are on offer for those, for those moderate and lower-income households and tries to respond to what you've seen in the implementation of the program and our goals that we've discussed. So I, I think that's a real success, and hopefully it means more people use it and we see even more uptick.
Just want to echo similar statement to what Councilmember Tiedemann just shared, but also just acknowledge and highlight that to me, it's exciting to see that community members are taking advantage of rebate program. That, to me, that's very promising. That shows people are taking the initiative and also very, I applaud staff for thinking creatively about how to get more people to take initiative, particularly those who identify as low-income to moderate-income levels. And it'd be, it can be very interesting to see if there is any change of data when we come back. And I'm, which I'm very hopeful and positive about. It was very nice to see that there's just under $16,000 left in available funding. So I, I say I'm more than happy to continue to support this initiative.
Yeah, I just, I want to thank staff as well, and I think you opened by saying, but the program council created. I don't consider the council created. I consider that staff created, and we just simply turned the key on it and approved it. So thank you very much for, for bringing that innovation forward. I did run some of the numbers on cost effectiveness in terms of greenhouse pollution reduction, given the, the figures that you had in the staff report. And it came out to $81 a ton, which over that same time period, the low-carbon fuel standard market in California, the credit price on average is been $90 a ton. So, you know, obviously Albany subsidy isn't the total cost difference, but at least for Albany, you know, we're getting a reasonable deal. And I think we're also going to be in better position because we're sort of helping the market here be ahead of, ahead of markets other places, so that when the federal credits come in it, you know, we're, we're in a better position with installers and whatnot. In, in that regard, do you get the sense that the 750 has been too low for some contractors to actually, you know, they're interested, but it's just not enough money?
I've found that, you know, I've, I've reached out to a lot of contractors. Most of the contractors who do a lot of work in the area, or at least pull a lot of permits in Albany, are already enrolled. So that's a big part of it. And the few who aren't, when I reached out, they just didn't really seem that interested. However, I am hopeful that now that the Tech Program has launched a rebate for heat pump water heaters, that's pretty large. And we've already seen an uptick in heat pump water heater installations in the city. I'm hopeful that maybe we can get some of the water heater contractors to sign up for the Tech Program in the coming months. So that's sort of like maybe a, a bigger market of possibilities. I'm not sure to what extent it's the amount versus just general interest. Hard to say.
Thanks. And that the 750 would be available no matter what their market target is, as long as they're getting the.
Yeah, that's the way we've written it, but it's really just about participating in these electrification incentive programs. And, you know, if you're part of the Tech Program, as a water heater contractor, you can also be involved in the heat pump side of it, you know, and a lot of people have kind of both sides of their business, or both sides of that business, so.
I do kind of miss the questions, but no, you just, saying that just kind of brought up something to me. Are we also reaching out to, not for the rebate part, but reaching in, in order to expand the program or, or share information about the program? Have we reached out at all to the architects in the area who are doing some of the remodels and stuff like that? Because I, I feel like maybe some of this is, is just still checking for other avenues, other pipelines to reach out to, to the whole network of people who are somehow connected to these. Because I feel like there's still a lot of people out there that are completely unaware of this program. And, and so if we could reach out to, to the remodeling architectures, any of the other stuff, even plumbers as well, maybe not just general contractors, but specifically plumbing and heating contractors that are, you know, would be another avenue to connect those pieces, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's fantastic. We've definitely done outreach to HVAC contractors, but not really to architects or those kinds of other folks, so we can definitely look into that.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, and thank you for all the work that you're doing on this. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, that raises a question for me. Somebody reached out who's new to town and wanted to meet. He's somebody who's very focused on greenhouse pollution reduction. And so we had lunch, and when I was looking through our, our dispersment rolls, I saw her name. And so she moved to Albany, you know, they got a house, took the subsidy, switched from gas to HVAC. So I, I don't know if you have any sense of how many of these are occurring at a change in property ownership? I don't know that you would, but I might as well ask.
Anecdotally, I know of a couple. But, you know, usually we, we just get kind of permit and not a lot more information, so.
All right. I just thought it was a great, welcome to Albany. Welcome to Albany. Yeah, yeah, right, yeah, yeah. I mean, that actually might be interesting, because when you talk about reaching out to architects, I was wondering if outreach to Realtors, it would seem.
I would, I would, I would ask, wondering if, you know, when somebody comes in to pull a permit for one of these, are we, are we doing our due diligence at the counter, saying, hey, these are, these are the programs that are available that might coincide with your project? Would you be interested in taking advantage of them?
We do to a certain extent, especially on the larger-scale projects. On, you know, for instance, if someone's just getting a furnace permit, that's usually something where the contractor comes in and does it when the project is already planned out completely, and they're going to do it the next day or something. And usually at that point, there's not really any, any convincing them. But we, we do, you know, let people know about it, especially if they're more in a planning phase of the project. And then we also have the, the free permit for electrification projects, so we let people know about that, too.
Oh, gosh, now you just.
Sorry.
Gave me one more step of it. So I'm a renter. And so I'm also curious now, are these for just owner occupancy properties, or are these also cover rentals? Like, have we thought about reaching out to property providers and letting them know about these programs and incentives? Because not all of the property providers are, you know, have a lot of money, and maybe this would consider helping. I mean, had I been able to get something other than a floor furnace reinstalled after our fire, that would have been fantastic. But, but so just reaching out to those property providers to let them know, because, you know, as a renter, then I'm paying higher bills in, you know, energy and stuff like that. So just another avenue pipeline, I'm thinking.
Do you know whether, are there any rented residences that have taken advantage of the subsidy, any rental providers?
I, I don't know. It's possible. Yeah, it's definitely open to, to rental housing, but you know, with any permit, the owner would be the one who's, who's pulling the permit. So I don't know off the top of my head if, if any of them are rented units, but it's definitely available for that. And when we have done mailers in the past, it goes to all of the building owners, regardless of whether the unit is. owners, regardless of whether the unit is rented or owner-occupied. But we could do more pointed outreach for rental buildings.
Do you know if any duplexes have been part of the program, or?
We've had buildings where there's an ADU.
Okay.
And we've had a few buildings where there's a rebate for the main house and also for the ADU.
Okay, so that's allowable.
Yeah, yeah, there's a limit of one rebate per housing unit.
Oh, great, okay.
Yeah.
So they do like a duckless for the ADU, and then a duck.
Usually.
Okay. The reason I was thinking about Realtors is I have no idea, do people, what percentage of house sales, is there, you know, either a replacement of the heating system, sort of in anticipation of the sale, and/or the new buyer replaces it, so they have a more comfortable space? Is that like 1%, 10%, never happens?
On occasion, it depends on the building. But again, they would be pulling a permit, and, yeah. So should be pulling a permit, I should say.
What I was thinking with outreach to Realtors is, if that's, if that happens, you know, 5% of the time, the Realtor's there, and they're the ones that, because as staff said, once they've already decided, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, and they come in for the permit, it's too late to.
Yeah, no, it could definitely also, as another avenue, reach out to the real estate community. But, yeah.
Yeah, because then they're there at the beginning of the process, or closer to the beginning of the process. Thanks.
So I will echo what other members of council have said, and really applaud staff for the effort that you've put into this. And I really appreciate having something brought forward to us with analysis of what has happened, and what, how you see really implementing what we all had seen as a vision of really getting low and moderate-income owners to higher uptick. So I love the idea that you've brought us new data, you've brought us new numbers and recommendations. And with that, I will look for a motion.
Move staff's recommendation?
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
And Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I did just think of one other comment, which is on the tax aspect of this. I think it might be useful messaging to relay that the city has waived the permit fee. So that's not entirely compensatory, depending upon the household's income, but, you know, maybe it could be seen as partially compensatory.
With that, we'll move on to new business, item 11,1, City Council Appointments to the Board of Police and Fire Pension Fund Commissioners. I think this is instigated by me, but okay.
Good evening, council. So this item before you is the Appointment of Alternates to the Board of Police and Fire Pension Fund Commissioners. That's a mouthful. Per City Charter Section 9.01, these alternates may serve for a period of up to one year unless, again, appointed. So it's time to reappoint them. Staff is recommending council to select a council member to serve as Mayor Mickey's alternate, and reappoint the other alternates as recommended. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
You're looking for volunteers?
I'm looking for a volunteer.
I will happily serve as an alternate.
Thank you. Do we need to take a public comment? Public comment, I guess?
There are no public comments.
Okay. Do we need, I guess we need to take a motion on this?
Yes.
Then I will move that we reappoint the proposed alternates and appoint myself as the alternate for the city council. Get everything we need?
I'll second it.
Okay. Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
And Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. So that brings us to item 12, Council Subcommittee Reports and Reports on Appointed Representations of Albany and Other Meetings and Events. And I will start at this end of the table, of the dais.
I only have one, which was Eva Community Energy Board Meeting. We talked about a couple things. I think one of the biggest was the budget, which we, the board has been discussing how to deal with the surplus for a little while. And Eva has more of a surplus than expected this time. This kind of is dependent on how PG&E sets their rates, and how a lot of different things happen at the state level, so it is not just because PG&E has been jacking up its prices or anything, or because Eva's been jacking up its prices. So there are going to be some policies that will come back about how to use some of that, and then some of it will go to a bill credit for customers. We also passed a Workplace and Environmental Justice Framework, which set out some things around organized labor, and where projects will be, and hiring, which I think was really, really good.
On the day after our last council meeting, I met up with one of the employees of Mosquito Abatement District to go do a tour of Albany, which was pretty enlightening to see how they go about checking for any potential mosquito issues. I also used it as an opportunity to point out some concerns that maybe they should check into with water pooling in some of the barrels along Solano Ave, to which they were very interested in doing some follow-up about. But we got to go to Golden Gate Field, St. Mary's High, all around the perimeter of Albany, check for any potential hotspots. And along the way, was given some advice on ways to mitigate mosquito, I don't know the word, infestation, mosquito presence. But it was a really good tour, and I would highly encourage any council member to hit them up and consider it. I believe they come out here at least once a week. They're out here pretty frequently, which I was not aware of. So that's also really good to know, and really be, really good to be aware of. Turned to Giltrack Farm, no meeting recently. Farm had been closed for volunteers as well due to recent hydraulic activity in our region. I also had a meeting with Supervisor Keith Carson right before this meeting to discuss opportunities for Albany, and things ranging from social services, mental health services, mobile crisis response, and a couple other exciting opportunities that I'll definitely be following up with city manager about. And I think it's also just worth highlighting that the county supervisor, Keith Carson and staff, they are very much excited to find a way to work with city of Albany again. They did acknowledge that pandemic had made it a bit challenging to have the relationship that they had prior to pandemic. So we're excited about that, and I'm excited to really elevate any conversations and resources that we can, specifically around mental health services, particularly for our young folks in the school district, where we know it is a very high-pressured school district at times. And, oh yes, I had also participated in the point-in-time count for unsheltered folks in Albany. That was very fun, waking up at 4:00 AM to get to the community center. But it was, it was nice to see the amount of people that came out to participate in this count, and to really make sure that our city is accounting for unsheltered residents, but also making sure that as we're accounting for them, we're also finding ways to bring resources to our community as well. We did have an opportunity to survey a couple residents, and for me personally, that was pretty enlightening to hear about their perspective of being an unsheltered resident in Albany. It's quite the juxtaposition, in my honest opinion. And I would say lastly, me and my chief of staff, we were definitely into the Niner spirit, bang, bang, Niner gang all weekend, that 24/7 deficit, and here we are. So looking forward for good reports next time we come back.
I have no updates. Thank you.
Well, first, thanks for meeting with supervisor and working on that. I very much appreciate that, along with the other work. So the Alameda County Transportation Commission did have a meeting, and I want to apologize to the city manager and the mayor. An email came out as a result of that meeting, and I hadn't followed up. Specifically, the commission voted to change three projects that are in the transportation expenditure plan, which is what the voters passed in 2014. This is very, various reasons. Probably the most dramatic one was there was a project to essentially rebuild the interchange of 580 and 680. The voters in the transportation expenditure plan, they put $20 million toward it. In 2014, I believe it was estimated to cost $1.3 billion, and so obviously would be even more now. And there was no prospect of a funding source to do that. And so that $20 million was just languishing. So the commission voted to basically change that project to something that would take what safety improvement steps could be taken with that money now, rather than waiting for some ideal future that looks like it will never come. So that's an interchange that's had, I think they said 160 injury collisions over some, like, five-year period, and six fatalities and whatnot. So it was of that nature. Something that's closer to us here was the transportation expenditure plan had over $50 million for rebuilding the Ashby interchange at 880, or 80. And that total project cost about $140 million, of which the agency so far hasn't been able to secure the rest. It's finished the engineering to some extent, and the environmental analysis. And so the commission approved phasing it, so that the part that can be done with the 50 million, which actually is another active transportation bridge, will go first, and then they'll be looking for money to redo the car motorist part of that. So that's what that's about. You got that email, there's no action needs to be taken, and none of it was, you know, specifically relevant to Albany. That's why they didn't jump on it. But I just want to let you know, that was what was happening.
Thank you. See, I did not have any appointment meetings, but I did get a chance with Director Bond to attend a, we had an opportunity to present to three different classes up at Cal who were going to be looking at Golden Gate Fields this semester, or are looking at Golden Gate Fields this semester. And so there's an Intro to Planning course, there's kind of an, there's an urban design planning course, and then there's a real estate course that's looking at Golden Gate Fields. And so it was great to present and be able to provide some background, and just see what the students come up with. So I'm hopeful that as the semester goes on, that maybe at the end of the semester, they might be able to present to councils, you know, kind of maybe, I don't know if we can go attend, or if they can come present to us. But it would be interesting to see what they, what they're thinking, so.
Fantastic.
Let's see. We have a report from former council member Peggy McQuade. She's reporting back from the Housing Authority. That is attached to the agenda. You can flip through that. Moving on to item, oh, sorry, public comment. Was there any public comment? Seeing none. We'll move on to item 13, Future Agenda Items. Are there any items that council would like to see on a future agenda item, or any members of the public that would like to see? If I asked for members of the public? Yes. Or any members of the public? Seeing none, we'll move.
Yeah. By no means urgent, but maybe a good moment to say I'm in discussion with city attorney about the possibility of amending the charter around its bond language, sort of a nexus with schools in there, and some other, some other language that I think is no longer serves and is no longer needed. So, not anything near-term, and she may say, no, we don't want to do this, but I thought I'd just socialize it now and here.
Sorry, so does that, do we, that's just, that's it, right? You just say what you want, and there's no discussion. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's how that goes, yeah.
So announcements of city meetings and events, you can see on the agenda upcoming events over the next few weeks. And let's see, with that, we'll move to adjournment. I want to thank everyone who participated today, particularly all the hard work that staff put in. And ending with, if your loved one has experienced thoughts of suicide, a mental health, or substance use crisis, or any other kind of emotional distress, call or text 988 to speak to a trained crisis specialist. And with that, I adjourn today's meeting.